Okay, since everyone's really quiet except for us, I'll call a meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, San Angelo ISD. It's going to be held on July 20th. It's supposed to begin at 5:45. We're a little late. First item on our agenda is to call a meeting to order and establish a quorum. Even though it doesn't appear so, we have a quorum of our board team here. Mr. Hernandez has been tested positive for COVID. So he's not with us, but the rest of us are here. So there's six of us here. We're honored this evening to have Dr. Kevin Huddleston, the Director of Ministries for the Arms of Hope Christian Care Organization, and he's going to lead us in our invocation.
Before I pray, I just want to express appreciation to all of you. These are certainly crazy times, and I know you have a lot of weight on your shoulders, but you are appreciated. God of all creation, even as we are gathered here, you were spinning the farthest stars, but yet you were still concerned about us. So Father, we are honored and humbled to be in your presence. And Father, there is work to be done. There is an agenda sitting before the people in this room, and there are items that need to be checked off and time and attention that needs to be given to those items. But Father, before that work is done, I pray that you will just visit each person in this room with your presence, and you will bring a sense of peace in your presence to each person that's here. Father, while the men and women in this room are carrying the weight of so many as they consider the work of the school district, Father, they also carry the weight of their own families. And so I pray a blessing on their families, that even as they are being concerned about this community, that you will allow them to stop and rest and listen to the cries of their own families and to sit and be with their families. And now, Father, tonight, as they consider the work of the school district, I pray that you will give them wisdom and discernment, and that they will seek to hear your voice as you lead them to the best possible decisions for the children and the families and for this community. Father, we know that decisions that are made, that not everyone will be happy, and sometimes it seems like maybe no one is. Father, I pray that these men and women will know that they have listened to you and the decisions they make, decisions that come from paying attention to your voice as you call them into this work, into this ministry of leading this community. Now, Father, we thank you for this day. And Father, when this day is done, I pray that you will grant each one of us sweet rest in your presence. We pray all of this in the name of your son.
Thanks, Kevin. Thanks. I don't know how many of y'all know Kevin well, as well as I do, but he's made an impact on thousands of youth in our community. So thanks for that, him and his wife Shelley as well. Next is on our agenda is pledges. So if everybody will stand, I'll lead everyone in our pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. I've got a script here. I'll read before we do our recognitions. Good evening and welcome. As the President of the Board of Trustees, the San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. Also welcome those of you who might be watching this tape of our meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by Texas state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on each one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I'll make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I'll ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SEISD's permanent legal record. In order that our tape might adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking. Also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones at this time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, and thank you for taking the time to join us here this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. And I will remind everyone, we've got several that are going to make public comments this evening, and I don't want anybody to think we're, the board's being rude. If the item is not on our agenda, basically all we can do is thank you for being here and appreciate you, your comments, the comments that you make, but we can't make any specific comments about your comments. So hopefully everybody understands that. We'll move forward with our recognitions, and we have our media role recognitions, and I think Ms. Wood's going to do that for us.
Thank you, President Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. Tonight is my great pleasure to honor members of our local media who have been strong partners with San Angelo ISD over the past year and during these unprecedented times. These distinguished honorees understand that they have the power to shape community attitudes about public schools, a responsibility that they each have taken very seriously. San Angelo ISD's media honor roll is a way for us to recognize fair and balanced reporting about our school district. Each of tonight's honorees are advocates of the district, our children, and our educators. We have asked our honorees to attend virtually via Zoom tonight out of caution for the health and safety of our community. Now, I would like to introduce the 2020 Media Honor Roll class for San Angelo ISD. We have Mr. Fred Key with Foster Communication, and I believe he is joining us on Zoom. So congratulations, Mr. Key. We have Rick Mantooth with Foster Communications. We can hold applause till the end, I'm sorry. And we have Carolyn McEnroe with KLST. We have Mr. Joe Hyde with San Angelo Live. We have Mr. Manny Diaz with San Angelo Live. And last but not least, we have Gregorio Gutierrez with Conexión. Thank you all for your service to our community and to the profession of journalism. Congratulations and thank you.
And Mr. Key is live, so I'm giving you a little scan of Mr. Key. Mr. Key, for the audience members. Thank you so much, Fred.
Okay, that takes care of our recognitions. We'll move to the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting, of our June meetings?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion for Mr. Dinn on a second from Mr. Dayagos. I forgot his name. We've only been together for like 15 years. Are there any questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment concerning our minutes? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is for comments for topics not on our agenda this evening. I have four that have signed up, and there may be others that wish to speak. If you haven't signed up and wish to speak, just make sure that when you get to the microphone that you give your name and address to, so Ms. Hopkins can write that down, and that way we can make sure we stay in touch with y'all concerning your comments. But our first person signed up is Willie Flores, so I asked Willie if he'd like to come forward. Thanks for being here, Willie.
How you guys doing?
Good.
Hey, first of all, I'd like to thank the school board for the wonderful job y'all are doing, especially in these trying times. And I want to get to the Lee Junior High deal. My kids, I went to John H. Reagan Elementary, Edison Junior High. When I went to them schools, the name was just a name to me. You know, I finished at Reagan, went to Edison, played football, and when I played football against them guys from Lee, you know, they're friends of mine, and it was Lee against Edison. It wasn't, Robert E. Lee was a Rebel general or whatever, you know. I just want to appreciate the job y'all are doing. My kids go to John H. Reagan. I've got a nine and 10-year-old grandson. They don't go to John H. Reagan because John H. Reagan was a slave owner. They go to John H. Reagan to get their education, you know. Life is not about where you've been, it's about where you're going. My granddaughter went to John H. Reagan. She graduated last year, Lakeview High School. She spent one year at ASU, and she's already a junior. That's how smart she is, you know. It's not in a name. And if we do change the name, let the people that want the name changed pay for the name change, because my tax money, I want it to go to my kids' education, not to change names on schools, because if you open Pandora's box, where's it going to end? You going to change Tom Green County, Borogard Street, John H. Reagan's name, you know? That's why I'm here. Our budget, I was here last week, listened to the budget report and stuff, and we're stretched out, you know, to the max, you know, no school and all that. I just, if we open Pandora's box, where's it going to end? That's all I've got. And thank you again for the wonderful job you're doing.
Thanks, Mr. Flores. We appreciate your comments. Next, is it Lana or Lana Primo?
Lana.
Lana, Lana Primo. Thank you for being here, Ms. Primo.
Thank you. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just going to leave my mask on then. I appreciate having the opportunity to speak to y'all again about the topic of renaming Lee Middle School. No doubt, a massive amount of your time and efforts have been devoted to the success of the upcoming school year, but I think it is imperative that the name change of Lee be seen as part of that success. Schools across the country have taken the necessary steps to rename their schools, previously honoring Confederate icons, and I actually emailed y'all some links earlier in regards to that. Within Texas, Grand Prairie and Tyler ISDs have voted for the name change. In 2014, Houston ISD unanimously prohibited the use of any race or ethnic group as a mascot or nickname. And in 2017, they also renamed the schools that honored Civil War leaders. It's time San Angelo be among those examples of communities who recognize the importance of this name change. I'm asking you to please officially add it to the agenda and vote in favor of removing the name of Lee from our middle school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Primo. Our next person that signed up is Destiny Brown. Destiny, thank you for being here.
My name is Destiny Brown. I am the ASU NWCP president, and today I just want to say thank you for hearing me out today. I think this is a very important topic to talk about, the name change of Robert E. Lee Middle School. So I also want to thank Ms. Ramon for starting this initiative. It's very important that we continue with this, because it's more than just a name. And I can give you an example. When I went to middle school, yes, that was only a couple of years ago. I'm young, but it represented something more than a name. I left my legacy there. I went, I'm actually out of Austin, but I came here for ASU. So saying that, that school is named after PFC Hernandez. He was someone who went overseas, fought for our country, and died in combat. And that is something that I hold dearly, because that is prideful for generations. I left my name on those walls. My brother, after I left, people still talked about me. Even when I go back to this day, people talk about me. That's how important it is. When you leave a school, you leave your name, you leave your history, you leave a part of yourself, even at that young age. I was prideful in that, and that's something that should be acknowledged, not taken away. We're not taking it away. The history is still there. The history is in our history books. That's what we read. I've read that for years and years. That's still there. We're not saying we want to take out history, we're just saying we want inclusivity. We should be, for all of us, how does it feel to be someone of color going to those schools? I was taught at a very young age how important education is, but representation, those people who come before you, who have the power to make that change, that's where the power holds. And today, we do need to put this on this agenda, because do you want, for me, it's not about me. I tell everyone this, I mean, everyone else on campus. I'm not going to be here that long. Like even you say it now, but I'm looking to my future, my future generations. I'm looking at my brother's generation, I'm looking at my children, my grandchildren, and that starts with us today. We have the power to make the change, and I really hope you put this on this agenda so we can continue a new legacy of equality, of opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. We appreciate that. We also have Camille Martinez wishing to speak this evening. Ms. Martinez, thank you for being here.
Hello, Mr. Lehman, members of the board, and fellow community members. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Camille Martinez. I am the mother of two San Angelo ISD students. I am a former student of Lee Junior High, which once was Lee Junior High, and I'm also a teacher for a private school here in San Angelo. I'm here to share my thoughts on the name change for Lee Middle School as well. As a mother and teacher, I have watched with a heavy heart as our leaders and educators and fellow citizens have attempted to navigate all that this year has thrown at us. 2020 brought on new realities that we just simply were not prepared to deal with. This flood of catastrophic events has hit especially hard on our Black and other underrepresented people of color. COVID-19 has significantly impacted Black, American Indian, and Hispanic communities with significantly higher infection and morbidity rates. COVID also exposed just huge disparities in healthcare access that were always a part of our reality, but not always noticed by many of us. In addition to this, the Black Lives Matter movement began and has continued to bring awareness to the gross injustices brought upon the Black community. Even with the present health scare, billions of people found it more important to express their disgust and disappointment with the horrible treatment of people of color. These things have affected the Black children and Black colleagues of our community in more ways than most of us realize. Now is the time to recognize that their lives and experiences are being shaped by a much harsher reality than many of us ever experience. The children in our community are facing things that we just never had to as children. Some are dealing with lost family members due to COVID. Some struggled last semester to keep up with schoolwork due to limited access to the internet and even just limited support at home. Some struggled with hunger and homelessness as they watched their parents lose their jobs due to COVID. In addition to these struggles, it's so important to realize that our Black and minority students and colleagues are also struggling with the reality that people are being unlawfully murdered while just going about their daily lives, shopping, jogging, and even sleeping in their own beds, simply because of the color of their skin. If your biggest worries as an academic right now are limited access to your office or classroom, restrictions to maintain social distancing, or whether to choose virtual or in-person learning, then you are living in a privileged reality that just isn't currently accessible to our Black and minority students and colleagues. Although I am a minority woman, I am able to see the privileged life that I have led compared to others. Despite the rise of COVID cases, many districts have chosen to change the names of their schools, including multiple schools in Texas. Cities all over the country are removing statues that hold former slave owners in a place of honor. The United States Navy and Marines have banned symbols of racism within their communities, along with the Pentagon and even NASCAR. Symbols and names are powerful representations of the beliefs and values held by our communities. For example, Satan is a huge part of Christian history, but Christian churches would never be named after him because he does not accurately represent their core beliefs. We do not need buildings named after Osama bin Laden or statues of Adolf Hitler to remember their place in history. The vision of the San Angelo Independent School District is the pursuit of excellence. Under the section on your website titled "Core Beliefs and Commitments," it states, "We believe all students learn best in a safe, supportive, and secure environment." I believe holding Robert E. Lee in a place of honor does not create that supportive or secure environment. We must recognize that our Black students and colleagues are living a very different reality from the predominant groups in our community. It is our job as a community to protect our most vulnerable. The children in our community are all of our responsibility. Even if just one child is struggling, sad, scared alone, it's our job to protect them. I ask that you consider how these children will be affected by the unanticipated childhood that they're living. I ask that you help us to do everything we can to ensure they grow up to become compassionate and empathetic adults. It's our job to be good role models for these children, to teach them right from wrong, and to make sure they grow up to do better and to be better than the generations before them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Is there anyone wishing to speak that did not have the time to sign up? Yes, ma'am. If you'll just come forward and make sure we know your name and your address so we can be able to contact you regarding your comments. Thank you for being here.
Good evening to the board, to board chair, and those present this evening. My name is Shirley Spears, and I'm here representing the San Angelo NAACP Unit 6219. This is my second appearance before this board and this body regarding name changes relating to Confederacy names or Confederate names for both Robert E. Lee Middle School and Reagan Elementary. When I was here the last time, we were here to support Mr. Jesse Ramon and his petition for changing the name of Lee. I'd like to read you our support from the NAACP membership today regarding Robert E. Lee Middle School and Reagan Elementary. On behalf of the members of the San Angelo NAACP, this statement is to advise the board and those present that we are in support of the petition to change the name of Robert E. Lee Middle School made by Mr. Jesse Ramon and are asking for consideration to change the name of Reagan Elementary. We have determined that both schools are named in honor of Confederate soldiers and/or politicians, such as in the case of John Henry Reagan, whose positions against America are unworthy of such honor and continue to promote divisiveness, exclusion, discrimination, and racism. I'd like to stop here based on some comments that were made by some of the other speakers. I am a product of the civil rights movement from the Dallas-Fort Worth area, so what I have and what I feel is not anything that I imagined. This is what I lived as an African-American little girl during the civil rights movement. So if you were not an African-American, a lot of the things were easier for you to deal with during the '60s, no matter what minority group you were from. But if you were an African-American, you were not, you did not have an opportunity, for instance, to go to a school where you could open up a book and go to any page that your teacher may have instructed you without a page being missing, torn up, what have you. So if you didn't experience some of these things, you can adequately speak to it, you can empathize, but you cannot adequately speak to the discrimination, the horror, and how it hurts to be not considered and not even visible in America. We have determined in the NAACP that both men and women, excuse me, that both men were honored with the naming of schools, and in the case of General Robert E. Lee, we're aware of efforts to remove his name and related status from his current place of honor. Today, we want to advise the San Angelo Independent School District Board and those present that we are requesting consideration to change these two school names and are prepared to offer recommended name changes that show pride and appreciation to our current mantra of San Angelo Strong. Now is the time to put these issues to rest and embrace those who felt uncomfortable as students and staff in the hallways of these facilities of education. I spoke to a young woman today in her early 50s who attended Robert E. Lee, and she told me about her horrible experience. She's only in her early 50s, to be at the school named after Confederate, and she was one of those smart students, and she understood what that meant. We appreciate that you are taking time to consider the request of the tax-paying public, former students, concerned parents, historians, educators, and principled people in this community. Thank you for all that you do for the students and community of San Angelo. We trust you will do what is right in this instance at such a time as this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spears. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Thank you for being here. If you'll give Becky your name and address, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, for allowing me to speak, and I would like to say thank you to the board and to the administration and faculty as well for all the COVID preparations you guys have done. Apparent, I appreciate all the work that you're putting into that. Last time I spoke as a parent, but I would like to speak. My name is Dr. Jason Pierce. I'm Chair of the History Department here at Angelo State University. And so I'd like to use my brief time here to discuss the historical aspects surrounding the naming of schools like our own Robert E. Lee Middle School, and three common myths about that period in Confederate history in particular. So myth number one, Lee was a benevolent slave owner. Well, what do we know about Lee the man and his views on slavery? We know that Lee did own slaves, not as many as someone like Jefferson Davis, for example, who owned over 3,500 slaves. But we do know he certainly had slaves at various points in his life. He seems to have regarded these people with little more thought than we give to furniture in our own homes. They were simply there. At best, he felt ambivalent about the institution. His mother-in-law, Mary Custis, was different. She thought slavery was morally wrong, and in fact, had freed her own slaves that she had inherited. She later convinced her husband, George Washington Park Custis, Lee's father-in-law, to free his own slaves in his will. And it's this part where we really get our clearest insight into Lee's behavior as a slave owner, because as executor of the will, it was his job to free the slaves per his father-in-law's instructions. For five years, he refused to do so, arguing that the slaves were needed to run the estate. For the next five years, he kept the men and women in a condition of bondage. When some attempted to flee, he had them apprehended, and according to contemporary newspaper accounts, whipped for trying to flee. One former Lee slave claimed, "He was the meanest man I ever saw." Only when forced by the courts to uphold George Custis's will did Lee finally relent and free his slaves in 1863, five years after his father-in-law had died. Hardly the benevolent slave owner he's made out to be. Myth number two, the war was about states' rights. Certainly, Southern men fought for a variety of reasons and fought very well. While rank-and-file Southern soldiers may have fought for their homes, families, and friends, there can be no doubt as to why the war happened. Northerners fought for many of the same reasons, as well as a desire to keep the Union intact and sometimes to strike a blow against slavery, as was the case with the roughly 300,000 African-American soldiers who signed up after the Emancipation Proclamation. While the lost cause mythology that is built up around the war would have us believe that the South fought for states' rights against a tyrannical federal government, the reality was there was only one states' rights in dispute. That was the right to hold another person as property. But don't take my word for it. Here is what the Texas Legislature had to say on the subject in their Declaration of Secession in 1861. Quote, "Texas abandoned her separate national existence and consented to become one of the Confederate..." the confederated Union to promote her welfare, ensure domestic tranquility, and secure more substantially the blessings of peace and liberty to her people. She was received into the Confederacy," and by this they mean Union, "with her own constitution under the guarantee of the federal constitution and a compact of annexation, that she should enjoy these blessings. She was received as a commonwealthholding, maintaining and protecting the institution known as Negro slavery, the servitude of the African to the white race within her limits, a relation that had existed from the first settlement of her wilderness by the white race and which her people intended should exist in all future time. But what has been the course of the government of the United States and of the people and authorities of the non-slaveholding states since our connection with them? The controlling majority of the federal government," which they mean Northerners, "under various pretenses and disguises has so administered the same as to exclude the citizens of the Southern states unless under odious and unconstitutional restrictions from all of the immense territory owned in common by all the states of the Pacific Ocean for the avowed purpose of acquiring sufficient power in the common government to use it as a means of destroying the institutions of Texas and her sister slaveholding states. In other words, Texas had no choice but to leave the Union in order to protect slavery." Myth number three, the monuments are history. Monuments are not history, but rather heritage, a collection of ideas and beliefs that explain to us who we are. They are not intended to teach history. Moreover, these monuments to the Confederacy came about in two very particular periods, the years just after World War I and the years after World War II. This is not a coincidence. In both the 1920s and again in the '40s and '50s, African-Americans returned from service overseas to a segregated America. They demanded improvements in civil rights, education, and daily life. In the 1920s, these demands were brutally crushed in eruptions of racial violence all over the nation in places like Chicago, Illinois, Tulsa, Oklahoma, and Rosewood, Florida. Only recently have these and other terrible events garnered the national spotlight. Similarly, African-Americans in World War II fought what was called the Double V Campaign, victory over the Axis and victory over segregation. Returning from the war, once again, they demanded action. This time, they would not be denied. A terrible incident, in fact, galvanized the nation and helped bring about change. In 1946, there was a horrific lynching at Moores Ford, Georgia, in which decorated World War II vet George Dorsey, his seven-months-pregnant wife, May Murray Dorsey, and Roger and Dorothy Malcolm were dragged from their car, beaten, lynched, and shot over 200 times. Public outcry stirred President Truman to action, who created a committee on civil rights. Truman, needing to do something tangible to win Northern African-American votes, decided to integrate the armed forces, a decision that set off a firestorm of controversy. Indignant Southern Democrats bolted from Truman's Democratic Party and formed the so-called Dixiecrats, hoping to prevent Truman from winning the 1948 election and to teach all Democrats a lesson. Truman, however, narrowly won, and the civil rights movement picked up steam. Undeterred, white Southerners looked to the Confederacy for inspiration, erecting monuments for Lee, Jackson Davis, and others as a form of passive resistance to the civil rights movement. The naming of schools, including this one, and the building of monuments was not an effort at celebrating history. They were tools for perpetuating oppression by sending a clear message in defense of the existing racial order and segregation. It is time that we move on as a nation and remove these last community-sanctioned vestiges of a racist legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate those comments. Anyone else? I do have a statement that we're going to release tomorrow, and so for everyone's information to our students, families, staff, alumni, and the greater community of San Angelo, we want to update you on the collaborative plan. By the way, I stand our Board of Trustees to thoroughly consider the retention of the existing name or renaming of Lee Middle School. At the heart of the matter, we're focused on respecting community ideals while embracing exclusivity and the equity of our students, for our students, excuse me. We understand this is a sensitive topic that members of our community care deeply about, so this plan is an intentional, thorough process to allow us to hear from the varied perspectives and unique voices within our community. The process will include downtown hall and survey opportunities open to all interested persons for broad input, as well as other events designed for groups particularly impacted by the matter. We appreciate feedback and participation from our community in this process, but request a tone of mutual respect by all, much like we've had tonight, so I appreciate that. Together, we will navigate through this process to a positive outcome for our students, district, and community. And then there's a calendar of events beginning August 4th. We'll have focus groups August 6th from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. and from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. and from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. We'll have virtual town hall meetings open to the public. We'll have, September 1st, we'll have focus groups August 26th through September 14th. We'll also conduct an online survey for the public September 14th. Again, we'll have virtual town hall meetings from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. October 6th, we'll do an analysis of information gathered from our focus groups, town hall meetings, and surveys. October 9th, we'll review the analysis to consider the proposed action to either retain the name or rename. October the 19th, a proposal for retention or renaming action will be placed on our board agenda for the Board of Trustees to consider. All town hall meetings and focus groups will be led by Dr. Luis Martinez and Dr. Lawson Orr and include the capability to engage in both English and Spanish. Dr. Martinez is a bilingual educator with over 30 years of experience, including three principal petitions positions at economically disadvantaged minority-serving high schools. Dr. Orr's professional experience in education spans over 40 years. He previously served as superintendent in Pampa ISD, Wichita Falls ISD, Highland Park ISD, and is now a college professor at SMU. This plan remains subject to change, provided updates that will be posted here and also on our Facebook page. For virtual town hall meetings, community members will be provided a link to enter the meeting from their devices. Details on how to participate will be announced at a later date. We want to do our part to keep the people of San Angelo healthy and out of the hospital and reduce future business closures that could significantly impact our community. For this reason, we plan to conduct our town halls virtually for the public as we're working closely with local healthcare officials to ensure we promote public health and safety. So that's our current plan. We appreciate the seriousness of this issue and everyone's concerns about this, and we look forward to continuing and working through that process. So does anybody, board members, have anything? Dr. Detloff?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, and thank you, members of our community, for providing your voice tonight. As Mr. Lehman indicated, we have a very detailed and thorough process to hear the voice of our community. We really, in this endeavor, want to engage equity. So what does that look like for our community? And certainly, students are at the forefront of that engagement. So as we engage equity in our community, we want to hear the voices of our constituents. And at that point, as indicated, I believe it's October 19th, an action call will be made to the Board of Trustees. In that action call, depending on the feedback we receive, the research we receive, and many of you have provided this tonight, depending on that, action will be taken to either rename the Lee Middle School facility and/or other facilities, if that comes up, or action will be taken at that point to keep or retain the existing name. So there's certainly a menu of options present for us, but we just appreciate the engagement of our community and to hear that voice. And we want you to know that these action steps will be outlined in detail tomorrow. So as we provide a press release, it will be on social media, our webpage, but we will release this information publicly tomorrow, and that will be provided. So this formal process with multiple events, multiple town hall opportunities will provide our citizens the opportunity and the chance to certainly have their voice heard. So thank you for your engagement this evening, because through dialogue is how we get better as a school system. So thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff. Any board members, any other comments? If not, we'll move forward with our agenda. Again, I appreciate everyone being here and the comments you made. Item seven is the reports portion of our agenda, and we've got a report from Dr. Jana Ritter concerning how we're going to handle school moving forward. Thanks, Dr. Ritter.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. So yes, it's been quite an exciting time as we're trying to finalize plans and make plans and constantly adjust plans to what we are learning almost on a daily basis from the Texas Education Agency as well as our state government. And we're happy to say that really throughout this process, we feel that we've been really in front of the decisions. We feel that we're doing our very best to make the best decisions possible for our students in San Angelo ISD. And so today, we did release and send through SWIFT-K-12 information to all of our parents in the district that outlines the choices that we have, that we've been providing information on over the past week or probably two weeks, on the choices that we're providing for our families in San Angelo ISD. So of course, part of our concern and our consideration throughout all of this is the health and safety, number one, as the priority for our students, our teachers, our staff, our community, all of these things, while also balancing the need for providing the education to our students. And since our closure in the spring, that happened so suddenly in March, and we found that we really have been putting together a great plan of trying to support our students in this time of challenge. So on the screen here is just the flow chart that we're going to be following, and so I'm going to just talk to that for just a moment. So in our district, we have two options, with the first option being in-person education. And we're providing in-classroom, in-person education to our students taught by our teachers, and it would be much like what we've done in the past with kids coming to school, teachers coming to school, but with many, many safety protocols put in place. We've done Facebook Live sessions to talk about what these safety protocols would be, and they are many. We have really made every attempt to purchase the personal protective equipment, to understand what we need to do with the physical setting in our buildings, and also with just the instructional setting itself. So it's going to look a little different. It's going to be a little bit different, but we embrace that opportunity of having our students face-to-face at school. For parents who really choose that they really don't want their students to come to school, we have a virtual academy that we are also offering. In our virtual academy, this will be delivered completely digitally, virtually, with instructional opportunities for our students provided through a platform that we have done much research on, and that we feel is going to be helpful and give our families an option for them if they choose to do the virtual academy. So here on a flow chart, what do we do as families here? So if you are already a returning student to San Angelo ISD, then you don't really have to do anything. You are going to automatically be enrolled in the in-person option for school. So if you're new to San Angelo ISD, you would then need to enroll in the district, and then you also have the same choice. If you are a returning student and you want to attend the virtual academy, you have that option as well. And starting today, it opened our window that we will have, I don't want to get the date wrong, through August, I want to say it's the 7th, excuse me, yes, August the 7th. So through August the 7th, starting today, going through August the 7th, for the opportunity for parents to opt into the virtual academy. So we're going to be providing many more details about what this looks like, what this is, what the platforms are, releasing more details about that within the next week. And so that, looking back at the flow chart, so again, if they're returning students, then they are automatically enrolled in our in-person. And if they want to go to the virtual, then they register through the link that was sent out today. And they can also contact the district if they did not get that, and they can contact us for help with that. So we look forward to working through these options with our families. We feel really good about it. We have a strong team of people who are working tirelessly to work on the very best opportunities for our students for their learning. So do you have any questions, board?
We're good. I think we've been kind of updated along the way, so the board feels good about our direction. So any other questions from our board team? Dr. Detloff?
I've got too many gadgets over here and screens and all sorts of things. Thank you, Dr. Ritter. I want to acknowledge certainly the work of our principals at different campuses in helping implement this plan, the work of our classroom teachers and our staff here at the administration building. One thing that we have learned in this pandemic is to be able to pivot quickly. Just recently, information was released from the Texas Education Agency on July 2nd. It was updated on July 7th and updated again on Friday, July 17th. So we are continuing to receive updates. I also want our community to know that we have conversations daily. This morning, we had a conversation with our city leadership, healthcare professionals in San Angelo, as well as our local CDC, to try to make the best determination of what are we forecasting in San Angelo and how can we keep a healthy school system with our 15,000 students that are set to arrive on August 19th. Again, as Dr. Ritter reiterated, we do want to provide families the choice. So right now, they do have the two options, and virtual is one of those options. However, we are closely monitoring school systems across our state. We are monitoring what counties are closing school systems. The University Interscholastic League is set to make an announcement this week regarding extracurricular and athletics. So all of these entities will impact our decisions going into the future. So you know, I certainly understand that it may seem like lip service, but it truly is a dynamic and evolving situation, and it is changing hourly, as many of you know that in your work endeavors or in your family as well. So it is changing constantly, but we want to make the best decision to keep our kids safe. Also, we want to make a decision that will help our economy. Our local economy is real, and also the safety and health of our teachers. Our classroom teachers are the foundation of what we do in a public school system. So they must be taken care of. They must have a high degree of wellness and safety going into the school year. So we're taking all these things into account and looking at this daily as we make the decisions. So I just wanted to acknowledge that it certainly is an evolving task in a situation we don't take lightly, and we want to make the best decision for San Angelo, the best decision for our teachers, and the best decisions for our community, because we know that the economy impacts and the workforce impacts many of our families as well, and we want to be able to provide community support.
Dr. Detloff?
Any other comments? If not, thanks for that report, Dr. Ritter. We'll move forward to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve our consent items A through G?
Move to approve consent items A through G.
Second?
We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Dr. Kingman to approve our consent items. Consent item A is consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year 2021. We had additional information at our places this evening when we arrived, so there's some additional folks, personnel, that we need to approve. Item B is consider approval of bids for child nutrition department. This is packaging equipment. Ms. Helms covered that at our pre-agenda board workshop last week. Item C is to consider the approval of bids for child nutrition department. This is for removal of material from grease traps. Again, Ms. Again, Ms. Helms covered that with our board team last week. Item D is consider bid number 20-005 for athletic equipment. Item E is to consider a public meeting date to set our maintenance and operating tax rate, used in district tax rate. That's a public notification. Dr. McFarland covered that at our meeting last week. Item F is to consider board meeting dates and activities. That's simply our agenda and our outlined meeting dates for the upcoming school year. And item G is to consider the nomination of a Region 15 candidate to the TASB board, and we discussed that as well last week. Do we have any board member wishing to remove any of those items? If not, do we have any board comments or questions concerning those items? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item nine, consider bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of June 2020. Dr. McFarland covered that. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindell and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve our bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of June 2020. Is there further board comment or questions concerning our motion?
Mr. Lehman, just a note to those folks watching on Channel 4, that all of these reports for June 2020 were, were reviewed at our pre-agenda meeting in detail. Any of the public that would like to review that can find that on our website at saisd.org.
Thanks, Mr. Dindell. Yeah, it's good reading. If someone wants to go out there and check all that, we welcome you to do that. Any other board comments or questions concerning our bills and accounts and financial statements for June 2020? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 10, consider the proposed amendment to the district's official budget in the general fund. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindell and a second from Mr. Parker to approve our proposed amendments in the general fund. This is simply moving items. There's no monetary difference when changing money from one function code to another to make sure that our auditor is pleased when it comes time for our audit. Do we have any further board comments or questions? Public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion is approved. Our next item is to consider approval of innovative courses for middle school and high school. Dr. Ritter is going to come forward and briefly review those with us. Thanks again, Dr. Ritter.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. So, these innovative courses are really just courses for our career and technical education program that allow us to provide the coursework necessary for middle school and high school students to carry out their program of study over their four years, actually down into our middle schools, that we provide for our Project Lead the Way courses. They are considered innovative courses that then allow us to provide the innovative education through the CTE courses for these students. So, that's what this is for, is for us to just approve those to be in the course guide and to offer them as courses for our students.
Okay, thanks. One is basically a course on leadership, and another one is introduction to engineering design.
Yes, sir.
So, we're be teaching that at, at Lincoln Middle School, I believe. So, that'll be part of our STEM program at Lincoln.
Part of our STEM program, and the Project Lead the Way will be at each of the middle schools as well.
Right. Oh, I'm sorry. It's at Lakeview rather than Lincoln.
Well, it's, it's Lincoln. It's a high school course that's taught at Lincoln, and we also have it for our CTE course for students who are freshmen as well.
Okay, all right. Further questions for Dr. Ritter? If not, we'll need a motion to approve innovative courses for middle school and high school as recommended by our administrative team. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Dindell. So, we have a motion from Mr. Lehman, second from Mr. Dindell to approve the, our administration's recommendation, recommendation for innovative courses in middle school and high school. Other board comments or questions? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion passes. Thanks, Dr. Ritter.
Thank you.
Our next item, Jason's going to present. Thanks, Mr. Henry. This is for consider RFP number 20-006. This is for video streaming rights for San Angelo Independent School District football games, assuming we have football games. Mr. Henry?
Yes. Thank y'all for having me here tonight. Tonight, I bring you RFP 20-006, video streaming rights for SAISD football games. Currently, San Angelo ISD does not stream any of its games. We advertised a request for proposals to accept video streaming rights of both Central and Lakeview High School football games for the 2021 season. This also included a, an, an option to extend for three additional one-year terms. Other sports, fine arts, and academic activities can be streamed with the approval of athletics or the appropriate department. We received one bid from Concho Sports Network. They are a local company owned by an SAISD graduate, Shay Harris, the owner of Concho Sports Network, is here with us today. I want to thank him for coming. All home games for both high schools will be streamed on the Concho Spal, Concho Sports Network website and other social media platforms. This includes Roku, Amazon Fire TV, YouTube, Facebook, Twitter, and Lone Star Gridiron. All games will be filmed in HD, and will, and they will use between four and 11 cameras during the production of these games. They are also proposing several other innovative additions above the proposal requirements. The administration recommends approval of the proposal by Concho Sports Network for the 2021 school year for the broadcast rights and video streaming rights for SAISD football and other school events upon approval. Y'all have any questions?
Mr. Henry, I have a question real quick. Would you, can you provide just a, a brief history on, because I may get some of the facts correct or incorrect, but would you provide a brief history on the history of UIL in Texas and football with video streaming?
Sure.
Starting last year and how the rules have changed?
For years, the rules have been that UIL did not allow any live streaming of football games on Friday nights. So, what most of the, of what would happen is they'd come in on Friday night, they would record them, and then they'd chop them up and edit them, and then restream it on Saturday, pretty much a tape delay until Saturday morning. Due to the COVID-19 and all the different things that are going on right now, UIL has come back and decided that they will allow live streaming, mainly because of the, the lack of access that we may end up having in the future once football, if it does start.
Sir, also, in conversations with Rodney Chant, our executive director of athletics, in district meetings with both Lakeview and Central High School, the district coaches and athletic directors have made an agreement that their games will be streamed locally. So, if we're going to, whether, you know, it's at Abilene or somewhere else, that those games would be streamed by a local entity, and so we wanted to provide our community that same opportunity to have their games streamed as well.
Absolutely.
Sorry, this is streaming of home games only, or?
We originally wrote it up to include both home and away games, and during the district meeting that Dr. Detloff was talking about, it was discussed amongst the district coaches and athletic directors that everybody would take care of their own home games, more or less to prevent extra travel and extra exposure for other people. So, if we're in Lubbock, for example, anybody from SAISD would be able to tune into the Lubbock station. Now, they won't get the great announcers that are our home favorites, but they will get to see the game from Lubbock while they're here. And then vice versa for any teams that are coming down here. When the Lubbock team comes down here, we'll stream it, and all of their fans will get to listen to our announcers.
And this is at no cost to the district?
This has no cost to the district and no cost for the viewing public.
Jason, will the traditional radio coverage be provided going forward?
Absolutely. The radio, nothing will change with the broadcast of the radio. It'll be still on Foster Communications and their sister stations.
Good questions. Other questions? Gerard? Okay, all right. Okay. Mr. Harris, thank you for being here, and thanks for, you know, bringing that forward. I think it's going to be an, it's an exciting time for, for us as a district.
I want to encourage everybody to get on his website. The, the video quality is excellent. I mean, a lot of his highlight reels, they're just pretty similar to what you'd see on ESPN, so it'll be great next year.
What, what's the website again?
It's Concho Sports Network.
ConchoSports.com?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thanks. So, do we have a motion? We don't have a motion to approve yet.
Motion to approve the proposal submitted by Concho Sports Networks for the 2021 school year for the broadcast rights, streaming rights for SAISD football and other school events upon approval.
Second?
Thanks, Dr. King. We have a motion from Dr. King and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Any further board questions or comments? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thank you again, Mr. Harrison. Thanks, Jason, for bringing that forward to us. Our next item is consider 2021 waiver for optional flexible school day program, which is, in this case, PAYS, and Ms. Hollahan's going to deal with that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, board members, superintendent. This year, we are not required to hold a public hearing to apply for the waiver to participate in optional flexible school day program, which we call PAYS, but the Board of Trustees does have to approve this waiver. PAYS is an alternative education program serving as a dropout prevention recovery program designed to respond to individual needs of students. PAYS is a unique path to graduation for students who have not been successful in a traditional school setting. All students attending PAYS are under the same graduation requirements as students attending Central High School and Lakeview High School, meeting the Foundation Graduation Program requirements as well as all-state assessment requirements. PAYS reopened in 2008, 2009 school year. To date, they have, there have been approximately 1,200 PAYS graduates. We are extremely proud of the success of this program, the commitment of our staff, and the efforts of our students. It is the administration recommendation that the board approve the waiver to continue the PAYS program under the optional, optional flexible school day program for the 2021 school year.
Thanks, Shelley.
Mr. Lehman?
Yes, sir.
I'll move that we approve the 2021 application for optional flexible school day program that's been outlined by Shelley, and I also want to tell you that Amy would like to second that. Her microphone's not working. She's had about three, three seconds that you haven't been able to hear, so I'm, I'm campaigning on her behalf, okay?
I think Gerard did that on purpose. He's got the cord. Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Parker and a, a, a second. A resounding second from Ms. Mizel Flint to approve our optional school day program for PAYS. Questions or comments from our board team? I think our board is, this is something our board's very proud of, and I was on the board in 2001 when we had to close PAYS, and so when we brought it back, I think a lot of our board team is very proud to bring it back, and that it's clearly a very popular program and one that provides success for so many students. And I didn't know what the numbers were, but 1,200 is an impressive number of graduates from, from that program, you know, basically averaging about 100 a year. So, other board comments or questions? Any public comment?
Just, I just want to comment that that is probably, and I know, I speak for Amy when I say this, that it's the, probably one of the best graduations that you can, you can attend to, to see these kids, what they've gone through, to get to where they're at. Some that have just said, "I'm not doing this," to where they come back and they get it done, and some of them move on to college and, you know, take control of where they're going. And I know every, I know, I know I don't make all the graduations for PAYS because of other things going on, but that is just one of the best to attend, because, you know, we know what the struggles those kids have gone through, and I am very proud of that program, that PAYS program. It, it's, it's done a lot of good, done a lot of good.
Thanks, Mr. Gallegos. Other comments? Since Amy's, you know, muted, we'll, we'll move forward. Any public comment? If not, I'll call for the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider compensation options for 2021 school year, and Dr. McFarland walked us through this last week, and we're going to do some more walking, it looks like.
Yes, sir. Really, my intent here is just to really answer any questions that I can clarify for you after the presentation. I gave you some information last year as, as an option, and...
Yeah, we'll take a pause.
Is, is mics? Oh, the mics aren't working.
They're off, too, although mine's okay.
How's mine? Mine's off.
Jack won. Testing, testing.
There we go. Sorry about that. We're having a little technical difficulties here.
Why didn't it just Amy? Amy gave it to everybody else. She spread, she spread the virus.
In the switch process, she put her microphone up here.
Go ahead, Dr. McFarland.
Yes, sir. So, actually, I presented the information to you last week, and nobody could see it on the screen, so I emailed you that, that information. You got it in your email as well as attached to board book, and so we walked you through that opportunity last week. And so additionally, what I provided to you over the weekend was some information with some analysis and comparison with peer districts and near districts that are around the state to give you an idea about where we stand and some, some complications that we might have with looking at compensation in, in the district and moving forward and those type of things. But basically, in summary, so what you have before you really is, is options. You have an option that you can look at our, our salary compensation situation and decide that you want to stay where we are in free salaries and, and move forward in 2020, 2021 with the same exact salary scale all the way across of what we had from this year. You can look at option two, which is what I presented to you last week, which basically looks at a small increase across the board for all district employees. It looks at teachers and, and those counselors, teachers, librarians, those people in, in the T-family, what we code them in the district techno, or terminology there, as getting a, a $1,000 raise straight across, general pay increase for that group of employees, and then a 1.5% increase for all other families on the board. One of the things I recommended, or that I recognized last week was that one point, or that, that $1,000 raise for the teachers was dependent percentage-wise on where you were on the salary scale, so that ranged from 1.6% up to 2.3%. And then again, that 1.5 is what it is for the remainder of the staff. And then lastly, the, the final, and that option in itself would, would cost us about $1.82 million to the budget, which the way that I'm arranging the budget, I've arranged for that to be a sustainable option for the budget that does not dig into the district's fund balance. And then the last option there is to look at possibly a one-time stipend. Again, these two, these options that look at increases are trying to do something as kind of a cost of living adjustment, because you want to give your, as, as Dr. Detloff had mentioned a little bit earlier, our teachers and our staff and our people... our teachers and our staff and our people that make the difference, are the foundation of what we do in this district. And so one of the things we also recognize is that even though the economy's going through tougher times and, but the prices aren't staying stable, those things will continue with just normal inflation. And so cost of living adjustments that you look at that are normal in compensation plans. So this third option would look at just a one-time stipend, and that would be up to the Board in regard to what that stipend would look like. I did put down there, just for a reference point, a $500 one-time stipend, just to give you an idea of cost to the district. And so anything that I can answer for you to clarify or to give further information?
Thanks, Dr. McFarland. Questions? Remind me that the state requires the healthcare contribution to be $340?
No, sir. The healthcare contribution required by the state is $225.
$225, okay.
Yes, and the district will pay $390 this year regardless of the plan.
Okay. And then also additionally, a $500?
That is also additionally, that is something that the district had picked up a couple of years ago.
We've done it for several years, correct?
And so that's something that's already built into the previous budget, so we're continuing to leave that in. It's a one-time $500 stipend that comes sometime in October that allows people as a, again, just really a benefit to them to help adjust to rising insurance costs. Yes, sir.
And Dr. McFarland, I apologize. The $500, if next year we had a budget issue, removing that $500 stipend would put how much money back into the budget? Do you?
I'm going to guess that's about right in the million-dollar range. Yes, sir.
Other questions? I appreciate, you know, I sent Dr. Detloff a note, and you responded quickly. So I appreciate all those answers that you provided on Friday of last week. My concern, and you eased some of that concern, but, you know, we are a little bit below what some of the larger districts in West Texas are paying their starting teachers, which over time also affects what we pay all of our teachers because most are on some type of scale. Whether we call it a scale or not, but they're on some type of scale. So as our teachers get more experienced and we get closer to other districts, but we're a little bit lower than some of the larger schools in West Texas. I think particularly the one that's, we've always used as a benchmark has been Abilene. And Abilene is now paying their teachers a little bit more. And I think it certainly, the fact that we have been using some of our fund balance money to take care of programs and facilities instead of us being able to pass a bond, which other districts have been able to pass, certainly affects the amount of fund balance we currently have and how we make decisions moving forward in the future.
Yes, sir. And the other thing for this board and the way they've treated their community is this board has been conservative in their approach to taxation. And the MNO Taxes Board has taxed at the allowable compressed rate plus the four or the additional allowable pennies, as in this year. It'll be the fifth additional penny, but that's allowable. And the Board has done that, but hadn't attempted to exceed that. So it's been really beneficial to the community here in San Angelo as far as that goes. On the flip side of that, districts opposite of us that are taxing at the maximum rate of their MNO taxation have years of accumulated finances that they build into those salary scales that you see that I compared with.
Any further questions or comments?
Well, I may not have read your comparison that you sent us correctly, but is Abilene charging at a higher tax rate than we are?
Right now, I think there is that spreadsheet in front of you. I think they're at 104 this year, I think. Or rather, they were at 104. I think.
Which is where we are.
Where we were. They're back at 97, I believe. I think they're the same with us.
Yeah, they seem the same at us.
Yeah, the difference with Abilene with us, if you look at comparison-wise, is their ability to pass bonds.
Yes.
That's made a difference for them in how they've spent in maintenance and operations costs.
And my question really doesn't have to do with the options you gave us, but it does have to do with the discussion that Mr. Lehman had brought up. But because I didn't, I don't think you've done a, if you did, I didn't see it. But suppose we wanted to raise our starting salary to start working it up by $2,000 or so. Can you give us what the, I know it's not just raising just for the new teachers. It has to start pushing others that are in the lower pay scales. They have to be moved up some too. But do you, can you give us some idea of what that cost would be?
That would, that would be hard to do, Mr. Parker, as far as, without getting a run, at least a good estimate because that doesn't affect just one group. That affects across the spectrum of that entire starting salary scale that we'd have to look at, and the number of teachers on each scale would vary, obviously, in the number of years and that you would be addressing. So I wouldn't be able to confidently here give you an estimate on what that would look like.
Well, how would we calculate that if we want to move it up?
Well, I would say the maximum amount would be $2 million because we have 1,000 teachers. And if we moved everybody up to full 2,000, then that would be $2 million. You know, that would be the maximum. But to Dr. McFarland's point, you know, not everybody would move up 2,000 on our scale. You know, some, they go up, some of them go up $250 to $500, you know, based on how many years they've been with the district. So that would be the maximum cost, or my estimate of the maximum cost would be 1,000, approximately 1,000 teachers. Times the 2,000 would be a million. Oh, 2 million, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Well, I just think at some point in time, we're going to need to start looking at that. And so we've got to have some way to calculate it. Because what I remember reading is that we're on the lower part of the scales where we're a little bit out is our teachers have more experience. We're pretty competitive with the other school districts with those. And I don't know exactly whether it's five years, 10 years, or wherever, that we're pretty comparable with what we pay there. It's just on the newer teachers or the younger ones or the ones that have been here the shorter period of time is where we're a little bit off. So I think that's something that's worthy of us looking at in the future. But to do that, we're going to have to have some idea of what that's going to cost. And I know that it may be a while before we're able to do some of that because we're anticipating that we're not, the funding may change for us after this year. So it's just going to have to be something we're going to have to look at. But maybe we can get you more information, that you'll be able to get us more information.
Right. And running, doing that type of run is easily done with the proper time and perhaps I was just responding to the nature of questions that I got in that comparison and analysis.
Like Lanny said, I appreciate all you got us in a very short period of time. And that was, so thank you for all the things you've been bringing us.
And it, you know, it's, I think it's just something that we need to certainly keep our eye on. And, you know, we do have an advantage. We've got a lot of students that are going to Angelo State. They're comfortable in San Angelo. Cost of living here is much lower than it is in Midland, Odessa. So a teacher that's making, starting at $50,000 in Midland, Odessa is not, they're paying much more for rent and a number of other things. So cost of living is much greater over there, but not necessarily so with Abilene. You know, so again, that's the one that I'm probably most concerned about as we move forward, to make sure that we're, and y'all will have to tell us, Dr. Gomez and others, that, you know, if it gets to the point where we can't compete and we can't hire teachers, then, you know, our board team's going to have to address that in a number of fashions. But certainly salary would be one of those methods by which we attract folks. So. But I have no problem with your recommendation. The recommendation is actually, you know, an increase for our, all the group, the existing teachers in our T group, you know, 1.6 to 2.3% based on how they fall within their scale of experience. And then we're increasing their healthcare contribution, which, again, the state requires $225, and we're paying $390. So we're making significantly more of a stipend for that. And then we're also adding $500 to each person who's on our healthcare program to assist them with their healthcare costs. So that looks to me like your recommendation. So.
So the 1% increase?
Yeah, excuse me. Yeah. Right. And then an adjustment of one to one and a half, to the midpoint of everyone else, all the other administrative professionals, IT group, clerical paraprofessionals, and manual trades groups. So it's a small increase, but it is an increase and one that I know y'all have spent a lot of time working through. And to Max's, Mr. Parker's comments earlier, we also don't know how we're affected by funding. We're in the second year of a biennium, so as we move forward, it's going to be interesting how the state funds education in the next biennium. But we've, I think we're assured of being in a good position with this proposal, at least through the current 2021 school year.
Yes, sir. And one of the things I would just emphasize to the Board is that when you do look at the consideration of adjusting salary scales as you move forward, I just want to reiterate what I'd mentioned to you in communication when that information was sent is that, as an understanding that those compensation plans aren't the development of one year of planning. Those are development of several, several years of cumulative effects to the district. And so it's definitely a point well taken. I've understood we need to look at and address that salary plan. And that's something that will take time over years to how we're going to address it and continue to build it up.
I think what our community, and as a board member, I'd like to feel comfortable with is making sure that the percentage of salaries that we pay, the total cost of our salaries is, every district's between 80 and 85%. I think that the question moving forward is, you know, if we're at 85 and Abilene's at 90, then, you know, how are they running the operations side of their business if their salaries are that much higher than ours? You know, so I think that's the percentage of how much we're paying in salaries versus other competitive districts, I think, would be something that would be advantageous for us to look towards in the future. I know that the cost of every district's well over 80%, but, you know, 2% of $140 million budget's a significant amount of money. You know, so that's what we want to look at moving forward, to see how that compares to other districts as a percentage of total cost, if that makes sense. I rambled.
No, it makes sense. And that's information that's easily obtainable.
George, my deal is funding, and like I know we get a lot of it from ADA. And I guess, I think I asked you last week, has ADA changed in any way with all this, you know, with virtual and in-person students?
The way the Texas Education Agency adjusted the way that ADA can be accounted for and applied to school funding for the upcoming school year. Previously to this school year, or this upcoming school year, there was no way to include what Dr. Ritter had introduced to us earlier tonight, this virtual academy where you had the option of attending 100% virtually or digitally, and that counting towards your district in student attendance. And that with the COVID situation, that's what TEA has addressed this upcoming year to make that an option for districts.
So they will fund?
Yes, sir.
They will be funding virtual online student attendance? Okay. Okay. Because that's a big cut. I mean, if they don't do that.
Oh, no doubt.
They have to do that.
I mean, they have to.
They have to do that. I mean, what?
The only stipulation in their force.
You never know what these guys are going to do, so.
The only stipulation in their force is with the virtual, you can actually reduce your percentage of absentees. Because if a student misses a normal day, if they're out two days for just a normal sickness, you know, and they get online, go fluidly into our virtual program that is running simultaneously, they can get attendance for those days also. However, since that is an option, what the TEA has done is capped you at the percent attendance you can claim. So they're capping us at the 18, 19 percentage of attendance, which is right around 95.4 or whatever. So even though we may have higher through attendance through virtual and whatnot, you can't have higher than what you had in 2019 or 1819.
Thank you.
Other questions from our board team? So I guess I'm going to try to craft a motion that takes in your recommendation. So a general pay increase for returning employees in the T group, T family, including counselors of $1,000. A minimum adjustment for paid ranges of 1% to 1.5% midpoint for other employee groups. A increase in the district's health insurance contribution from $380 per month to $390 per month. And a $500 health insurance supplement to assist employees with their insurance in TRS active care premiums and benefits. That is your recommendation, correct? Okay. So that's my motion. Do we have a second? So we have a motion from Mr. Lehman and a second from Dr. Kingman. Do we have any further board comment or questions?
Mr. Lehman, there was one other article in item two that said revisions to the district's pay plan for temporary seasonal extra duty position and stipends.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. So please add that to my motion, Becky. And we have a list of that. That was provided for us as well. Okay, so we have an amended motion in a second. Okay, if we don't have any further board comment, questions, any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Dr. McFarland, for your work on that, and again, for meeting my needs on a Friday. Our next item is also Dr. McFarland's, our property and fleet liability insurance. Dr. McFarland?
Yeah, so you had Mr. Edwards here last week. He wouldn't be able to attend this week, but talked about the increases that we were capped at based on our three-year contract with them and showing you in your information that was sent via board book, the cost of each portion of that risk management insurance that the district will purchase this year, the liability, the auto, the property, and the cyber suite. So those are included in the cost. Again, it's a 10% increase over cost from the previous year that we would be looking at.
Thanks, Dr. McFarland. Any questions concerning that?
Does that include the same deductible plan that we're on now?
It's the same deductible.
Good question, Mr. Parker. Yeah, our deductible plan covers, if we have an event rather than, an incident rather than each particular building, having a deductible. We've, that's been pretty advantageous to us since we have hailstorms that seem to damage all of our school buildings. And if we didn't have, if we hadn't signed a three-year contract with this group, our rates would go up much more than 10%.
That would, I think, significantly.
So we need to anticipate that as a future cost increase as we move forward.
Yes, and you may know this off the top of your head, but how many million dollars of roofs are we going to replace just from this latest storm?
The numbers we've heard are in the $25 million range.
So just for, I'm about to make the motion to approve this, which is a little over $1 million a year. But it just takes one storm, it makes it very much worthwhile. But so I will move that we approve the administration's recommendation continuing the agreement with PCAT and purchasing property, fleet casualty insurance through them at a cost of $1,114,536. I'll second that, Mr. Parker, just so the public knows our deductible was $250,000.
But that was for all the schools?
That was for all the schools included together, so.
So if we have 25 million in losses and we only had 250,000 out-of-pocket cost. So not counting all the work that our maintenance team did, you know, so. But we appreciate their efforts in cleaning things up and doing all that. But our insurance, we saved a significant amount of money because. we saved a significant amount of money because of that insurance plan. Other board comment or questions? Any public comment? If not all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider refunding our bond taxable Series 2020, including the adoption of an order authorizing the issuance of such bonds, establishing parameters for the sale and issuance of such bonds, and delegating certain matters to the authorized district officials. Dr. McFarland?
[inaudible]
Okay. Okay.
So again, we've got Jeff Robert here from Hilltop Securities, who is gonna be able to visit with you and answer any questions that you may have had since you've received that information and the resolution and whatnot.
Hi, Jeff. No. Huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Jeff, try to talk and see.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, President Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of board, hope everybody's doing well. As we visited last week, the district has an opportunity, we believe, to, to save in excess of $4 million on the, the taxable refunding. I know we went into it in a little greater detail last week. And, and Dr. McFarland had asked that I, that I be on to answer any questions if you might have any. And I'd be, I'd be happy to answer those if the board has any questions.
Thanks, Jeff. Any questions from board team?
Jeff, just as a matter of reference, it's, it's built into the book. The savings of $4 million is, is over a period of technically about 14 years. So it nets the district about $286,000 per year over the, the savings per year over the life of these bonds?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And, and, you know, when you think about the, the level of dollar savings, a lot of times I'll look at it in terms of, you know, what, what, what kind of capacity would that open for future borrowings? And I, I think we're pretty close to about $300,000 per year. And if you think of, of a 4% interest payment on $7 million, that's $280,000 a year. So in essence, this refunding opens up, or should open up, at least $7 million more of capacity than you have right now. So it's a substantial amount of money. And, and obviously, interest rates are very low on your investment side. And I know that's, that's challenging and difficult. But on the other hand, they're very low, obviously, from the borrower's perspective or refinancing perspective, which you have the ability to take advantage of here.
Thanks, Mr. Roberts, for that explanation. Other questions? Dr. Kingman?
Well, and just for our, the community and the people, it does not change the time or expiration of our bonds. We are just refinancing the current terms of, or.
That's absolutely correct. We're not gonna extend the term. We're not gonna increase the principal amount borrowed. It's, it's strictly a refinancing over its current term. That's correct.
And I like your comment about us making less money than, you know, we, we have money invested and we're making much less in our long-term investments as a result of low interest rates. So this allows us to kind of reduce our interest rates on our debt and, and save some money there while we're losing money or, or not making as much money on the money we have invested.
Yes, sir.
Other questions or comments? And this seems like a no-brainer to me. So I, I guess the motion would be to adopt the attached order authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds. Do we have a second?
Amy, second.
Okay. So we have a motion from Mr. Lehman and a second from Ms. Mizell Flint. Any other board questions or comments?
If I might jump in and add one thing in terms of timing, probably the earliest we would be able to potentially price the refunding or finalize the, the refinancing, if you will, is probably about two weeks from today. So it'll probably be that week, two weeks from now. We've got to do some, some bond rating calls and a few other things in order to, to be prepared to do that pricing. So just to give you an, an update on time, we're looking at, at least two weeks out, hopefully that, two weeks from now.
Yeah, and historically, you've kind of told us when to pull the trigger. If it's, if it's, looks better in three weeks than it does in two weeks. I think you've helped us with that historically, too.
Yeah. You know, we, we try, we're hopeful that we'll hit the, the lowest possible market, certainly. I mean, I will tell you, it's, it's very volatile right now. But, but what the board is considering tonight gives us that flexibility and gives the administration that flexibility to hopefully have the ability to pick a favorable date to price the issue rather than it just falling on the date of a board meeting. So what the board's considering tonight really gives us a, a lot of flexibility in terms of picking that pricing date.
Other questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment? We do have a motion in a second, so I'll call the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposing indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate you. Bye-bye.
I think that concludes our business for this evening. Our announcements are our financing pre-agenda workshop, which we go through our budget in quite a bit of detail on August 10th of 2020. Our regular board meeting is August 17th. And then we'll actually adopt our budget on.
It should be August 24th.
Sure. August 24th. So we'll do the adoption on the 24th. Do we have any further board business or any board member have anything they'd like to place on a future agenda? Dr. Detloff?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman.
Or, or our superintendent, would he like to place something on there?
I'm not gonna place any item on the agenda. However, I do want to take this opportunity under our agenda item announcements to relay this exciting news. Today, we learned that our San Angelo ISD Board of Trustees was nominated as one of the 14 honor school boards in the state of Texas. And they will go on to compete to become a top-five finalist with TASSA. Many of you have heard of TASSA, the Texas Association of School Administrators. Certainly a, a great group in Texas that values public education and, and all educators and school boards. So we will release, again, we will release this officially tomorrow. But wanted to give you guys a head start that our school board has named, been named, and will compete for a honor school board role. But there were only 14 districts, a board of trustees named in Texas. And we were honored that our board was selected as one of those. So more information will come. And we look forward to becoming a finalist for the Honor Board of the Year Award.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff, for, for your nomination. We appreciate that. And we'll see how that turns out. And I don't think we have any further board business. We don't need to go into closed session for any reason. So here, no objection. We'll stand adjourned.